The Pledge of Legions.
Let us pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So our first item is, oh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Froen.
Here.
Councilmember Mohan.
Here.
Councilmember Wong. Vice Mayor Moore.
Here.
Mayor Chow.
Here. Do I have any close session report?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Thank you. We have two ceremonial items. The first one is the recognition of STEM winners from the city of Cupertino who participated in the Santa Clara County 2024 Synopsys Champion Science Fair. This is the item that we are glad to celebrate every year. I think at one year, my son was one of them, but he didn't, he didn't really come to attend even when I was here. So I'd like to welcome all of the winners and I'd like to thank all the teachers and parents who helped them with this Synopsys Science Fair. We are honored to, for, we are honored to have you. So.
Mayor, we do have a representative from the Santa Clara Valley Science and Engineering Fair Association, board member Forrest Williams will be receiving the certificates on behalf of the awardees.
And do they have a presentation?
I believe he has just a few comments to make.
Okay. Please, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and city council members. I'm here to thank you for considering your students that were winners at the Synopsys Championship. We thought it very fitting that if the city knew of the good work that the students are doing and preparing themselves for the future, that it will encourage them even more to continue on the path on which they are pursuing. I'm an engineer at heart. I've worked in the profession for over 40 years. And it's an inspiration because there is nothing new under the sun. It's just discovery. And to find and use the energy and the materials that are available on earth to better our condition is very, very important that we train and educate our students now so that they will be ready for the world that we're going to leave them. And I'm sure you know that we will leave them with lots of problems. And if we can encourage them to continue in this field, our mission is to encourage students, parents, teachers, coordinators, and let them know that there is another world and that we're going to have to pass the torch sooner or later. So I'm pleased with the work that the students have done. We do a science fair every year for all of the schools and cities within Santa Clara County. And out of that, we want to bring them back to the cities in which they go to school and live and let the cities know exactly what they're doing. So I thank you and I appreciate your consideration. Thank you, Ron.
Yeah, thank you for coming. I understand that we are honoring three outstanding Cupertino students who have participated. And I'd like to express my sincere congratulations to each of the award, award recipients here. And I think I majored in computer science. I think Vice Mayor Moore majored in chemical engineering. And so I think Councilmember Wong is also in the STEM area, public health. So it, if, whether you pursue a STEM career or not, one day you could also consider to have a public life and serve, do public service. So I hope you will be able to have both a professional career, but also a civic career, where you either volunteer for an organization or even volunteer to run for a position. So I hope to see some of you come to council meetings and make comments on any city issues. That, take a photo with all the, all the awardees, please come upstairs. Come to the stage. So the second ceremonial item is recognition of February as the Black History Month. I understand we don't have a presenter. Do we have some? Oh, so we have a representative from Chamber of Commerce. So, um, tonight, I'm honored to recognize February as Black History Month in the city of Cupertino. In this month, serves as an opportunity for us to celebrate the profound contributions that Black Americans have made to our nation, our state, and our community. Black History Month is not just about remembering the past, it's also honoring the resilience, innovation, and leadership of Black Americans who have shaped the history and continue to influence the present. From science, technology, to art, education, and civil rights, their achievements have strengthened our society and inspired generations. I think we have a very good example of, of someone of great achievement in Cupertino here today. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure. I'm Michelle Viera. I am the senior director with Prometheus Real Estate Group, as well as a board member of the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce. And I did have planned to say exactly what you just said. And I'm no public speaker, so I will just thank the city as well as the, everybody here to, just for acknowledging and recognizing the, you know, contributions that Black Americans have had on the country and that we continue to have and will continue to have as with the support of everyone.
Yeah, I understand you are also a board member of Cupertino Historical Society.
I am not.
Oh, I thought I met you there. My mistake.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I think you are involved with, besides your job, Chamber of Commerce, you also are involved with the community. So we are honored to have you in our community.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. Okay, so then next is the postponements and orders of the day. Oh, I don't have my, I think we would like. Um, so we, we would move item 10, as I remember. Sorry, I, I think I emailed a note to you, but I don't have my.
Mayor, I believe you are, we're going to discuss item five regarding Tyler New World Enterprise Resource Planning ERP replacement and item 10 relating to Cicerco Energy Solutions.
Yeah, I think I'd like to continue item five to the February 18th meeting because there is a lot of information that was just shared yesterday and today, especially the needs assessment. And I just found out this afternoon that the higher end tier two system is three times more expensive than the lower end tier two. So I think I, we, I hope that when it comes back, the staff report can provide more information about, even though we understand we need a system, but the cost of the system could be better explained. And so item five will be continued to February 18th. And then item 10 will be moved to be discussed right after consent agenda.
Mayor, just to note, the February 18th meeting was moved to.
Oh, 19th, February 19th. Yeah, continued to February 19th.
Mayor, I'm sorry, Mayor. So just for a point of clarification, in addition to the supplemental responses that were issued yesterday and today, were there additional information that you would like to see?
I would like to know, since the cost between higher and lower end tier two is three times, I would like to know why we need the higher end tier two system? And yeah, any else we?
I, I would like to add to the mayor's comments. I do this for a living. I do ERP procurement. And so there are a couple other questions I would like to add around cost per user. I want to look at procurement in terms of understanding how the skilled contracts are, also in terms of what contractors we're using, in terms of what their rates are and what overages will look like. So I do want to get to those details.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Can we get a list of the questions from council so we can adequately address them in the staff report? Thank you.
So council member can submit questions after the meeting then?
I will.
Yeah. And send the staff, there were a lot of information provided in the supplemental reports, but they should be included in the staff report in, to begin with. So, and also I hope the agenda description would include the budget allocation amount for transparency. So, may I have a motion? So I'll just make the motion to continue item five, the ERP system to February 19th with enhanced staff report and answers to additional questions from the council members. And we are moving item 10 to be right after the action calendar. May I have a second?
You have a second. And I recognize it's critical that we have that ERP system and that it's important to have a more modern one. I just want to make sure that we're fiscally responsible and asking the right questions. ERP projects have a 30% fail rate and it's typically how we work with, work with the needs assessment and we work with the implementation teams. So I think it's critical that we do that so we don't have an overage here, given the fact that we have a tight budget. Tell you have a second.
Mayor, would you like me to start the vote?
Let's just vote, yeah.
Just a clarification, Mayor. What are we doing with number 10?
Moving it so we can discuss it right after the consent calendar.
Okay. Thank you.
The motion carries unanimously.
Then next we have the oral communication. City clerk.
Yes, Mayor, I currently am holding three cards, possibly four requests to speak. I see one hand raised virtually, so.
Would you like to give a little instruction?
Oh, yes. Pardon me.
Thank you.
This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the council and not on agenda for discussion. The total time for oral communications will ordinarily be limited to one hour. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes. As necessary, the chair may further limit the time allowed to individual speakers or reschedule remaining comments to the end of the meeting on a first come, first heard basis with priority given to students. In most cases, state law will prohibit the council from discussing or making any decisions with respect to a matter not listed on the agenda. A council member may however briefly respond to statements made or questions posed by speakers. A council member may also ask a question for clarification, provide a reference for factual information, request staff to report back concerning a matter, or request that an item be added to a future city council agenda in response to public comments.
Thank you, City Attorney Clerk.
So Mayor, I am, uh, we are looking at 18 minutes so far of those requesting to speak?
Thank you, yeah.
Yes, okay. We'll start with Nori. Oh, pardon me, that is for item 10. We'll start with Ranjan Desai, followed by Dwi Dilai. Nori, actually, you're speaking on item 10. I apologize. So you, your item will be heard later on in the.
Later on?
Yes, thank you. So Ranjan?
Yes.
Welcome.
Yeah, hello, council members. Good evening. I'm Ranjan Desai, and I'm resident of Cupertino for a long time. I'm here to talk about the Mary Avenue Villas, which are affecting our community here. There were actually four lanes on the Mary Avenue, long time, long, long time back. Now it's turned down to only two lanes and there are new buildings have come up on that area, about 100 buildings. The traffic has really become more and there's, you know, there's, these new villas will be about 40 or 50, I think, and they're going to endanger the children who are going to bikes, go to school from there. And it's going to have a lot of impact on the residents around there. And I was told by one of the council members, was here, very old one, that this was originally supposed with a valko and it was pushed here and, you know, because of some, all those laws that SB 30, whatever, 30, 40, 50, 100 came up and also. I think I want you to, I want you guys to reconsider the RFP, recall back that RFP, request a proposal for that buildings and then, you know, allow these buildings to be at the valko's place where they were supposed to be originally. And also there were a lot of issues which, you know, which are going to cause problems like for the people who are disabilities, there'll be like a lot of, you know, there was two meetings that happened in the Quinlan Center, which were attended by a lot of people and many, many people were just opposed to that. There's hardly, very few people who were really wanted these villas to be there. I'm not sure whether this is being communicated to the council members. So I'm here to let you guys know that this is being opposed by a lot of members there. And it's going to be a lot of issues with that. And there was another member there who came up, who had said that in San Francisco, this was already there. These type of buildings and there were a lot of delivery vans and all these to come up and they used to block the roads. And in future, I think it's going to be a lot of inconvenience to the people who are there because there's actually no place in the Mary Avenue to be, to be, you know, to be precise. There's hardly any place for even like five or 10 and they are going to have like 50, right? So it's going to be a lot of issues and a lot of problems there. And also there's, you know, there's these new buildings that have come up, like 100 buildings there, then there are a lot of communities will be coming up and then children will be endangered and even the disabilities, people who are disabled there, they will also be endangered. So I request you guys to look at the RFE proposal again, to recall back that and then have two lanes there instead of adding one more lane for the traffic in future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Dwi.
Thank you. Just a minute. I think it's important to correct misinformation right away. This project has nothing to do with valko. Whoever told you that is trying to spread misinformation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Dwi.
Good evening, Mayor Chow, council members. I don't have much to add to what Ranjan has already told you. 15 years back, there was a similar project, came up on the same spot and it was, the, the city council at that time rejected it because of, they understood the non feasibility of the project because it was encroaching the road, narrowing the road. Probably this is probably the first time you have ever heard a building coming onto the road and narrowing it. And that is something which is very severe and it is going to impact a lot of people over there. Please make sure that before you approve any of these projects, please make sure that you understand, run a traffic analysis, assessment of that area and then approve it. My request to you is, please visit that place, make sure that you understand it firsthand. Thank you.
Talking about the Mary Ave area?
Yes.
Okay, you're talking about the Mary Ave and the reduction of lane and the reduction of parking spaces, correct?
That's right.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody knows that because I think we didn't have the context set.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And there are, there are people who project that city council is already on board. That's why we are concerned about that. That's, I want to understand, the person over there was a former city council member, he, he kind of said that, okay, city council is already on board, which is, I just wanted to make sure that you guys understand that. Thank you very much.
We haven't seen the project yet.
Okay, next we will move to those members of the public requesting to speak virtually. We have San Ar, followed by Rota Frye. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and council members. I wish to speak to you on an item not on the agenda. However, it is something that is probably applicable to all items on the agenda, and that is the matter of how you make decisions on DIAS. For far too long, residents have had to write in with comments and to show up at these meetings and to speak on behalf of each agenda item. And it is not sustainable for Cupertino residents to spend their evenings sitting in front of the DIAS or sitting on Zoom, speaking to five council members on each agenda item on each council meeting. The reason that residents voted, the five of you onto DIAS is because residents trusted your judgment, they heard your campaign promises, and you heard feedback from residents. And the five of you collectively have knocked on thousands and thousands of doors and received perhaps 10,000 votes each. And collectively, the five of you represent at least 10,000 or more residents. And so I ask of you to not vote on agenda items based on how many people wrote in and who wrote what and how many people spoke, because for the average resident, it's not sustainable to show up repeatedly for these items. And in fact, after the last election, when I talked to residents, they say, why should we write in again? Why should we speak again? Didn't we vote for these people? Didn't they say they were resident focused? And so there is a belief that residents that I talked to have, that you will be trusted to make the right decisions. And so I appeal to council members on DIAS, the five of you represent diversity of residents' viewpoints, but you also represent diversity of a timeline when you heard from residents. Some of you heard from residents perhaps in 2022, some of you heard from them in 2024. And that timeline difference may also indicate feedback that residents had for you based on what they saw of the previous two years. And so please do not vote on items based on how many people wrote in and who wrote in and how many people show up to speak. Because frankly, there are advocacy groups that are committed to their cause, that can make the time to show up, and 60,000 people do not have that hunger to advocate for every issue over and over again. However, they advocate with their votes every two years. And for those of you on DIAS, you represent the trust that residents have placed in you. And so I ask you for items today and items in future, please do not go by people writing in because the city clerk's office can segregate the letters and they can count how many people wrote in and the city clerk's office can make the decision. We don't need five elected council members to make those decisions. Frankly, we could put five fourth graders and they could count the letters and say who wrote what and how many. So please vote with your gut and your decisions.
Next we have Rota Frye. Welcome, Rota.
Hi, good evening. I'm also going to comment on public commenting regarding oral communications. So, you know, ostensibly, I get three minutes to talk to y'all, but if I wrote, write something in, the only way to get it into written communications is for a council member to read it and go through the steps of putting it, putting it in the written communications. And I would ask that the, this was apparently discovered that it was always the case that it should have been that way and it wasn't. So now I'm asking that the MUNI code be modified so that we can once again put in written communications and that they don't have to go through the extra step of, of, I guess, really, I guess auditing or approval by, by at least one council member. The second thing is I wanted to talk about the parking issue along Mary Avenue. You know, the ALI Housing Project, great idea, but we do need to find a way to retain parking there. And, and not just for that, we all occurred at former Mayor Sheila's last mayor coffee meeting, residents in the senior housing project at the Old Oak Shopping Center had also talked about not having access to parking. They would be given parking when a project next door is built, but who knows when that, when or if that's going to happen? So let's please help the folks who are there right now and make sure that we have adequate parking in the future. We all know that Mary Avenue, that those who've lived us here for a long time has been, has had a lot of parking on it in the past. Two more items real quick. I'm worried about potential runoff and slopes instability at the rejected builder remedy project adjacent to Linda Vista Park. What is the risk to neighbors, the park, our ecosystem, et cetera? And finally, I do have an ask of the city council to the city manager to put out press release. We have read that the city attorney Jensen, in the San Jose Spotlight, will be resigning from the city. And, you know, I would have preferred to read that in a press release rather than in an editorialized article in San Jose Spotlight. an editorialized article in San Jose Spotlight. Some people have said that Mr. Attorney is fleeing our council. However, having, you'll see in my written communications, that this is actually going to be one of his longest places of employment in his entire career. So I think he's had a good run here. He's gotten good experience and I'm sure he'll enjoy his return to San Francisco. Thanks.
Thank you, Rota. May or no additional requests to speak on this item? Your microphone, Mayor. Microphone. Mic.
So next we have the consent agenda. I believe, so item five is already continued to February 18th. And then we have items three, four, six, seven. May I have a motion? Oh, and comment on, any comment on items three, four, six, seven?
Yes, Mayor, I have, I see one request to speak from Peggy Griffin for item six. Anyone else wishing to provide comments for the remaining items on the consent calendar? Please submit your request to speak in the next nine minutes. Peggy? Welcome.
Hello? Hello? Good evening, council members and staff. I want to thank the staff for answering all my questions, well, thank Mayor Chow for forwarding my questions to the staff and for the staff answering my questions on items five and six. I really appreciated that and I did have time to read it before I came. As far as item six, bridge preventative maintenance, I am all for it and I'm excited that it'll be done in six months. And I like the list itemized, so I know exactly which bridges are being done. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Mayor, I see no additional requests to speak on this item.
Thank you. So may I have a motion?
More through the mayor. I move items three, four, six, and seven.
Second.
Okay, let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, now we, item 10 is moved ahead. So item 10 is an award for design build contract to Cicerone, Cicerone, Cicero Energy Solutions for $4,339,881 and award project management and construction management agreement to Four Leaf Inc. for $225,000 for the photovoltaic systems design and installation capital improvement project. Okay, so do we have a short staff representation? I understand it will be short because it was, this was originally a consent agenda item.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Chad Mosley, Director of Public Works. I have Susan Michael here. She is the guru on the project and she'll be the one presenting the contract details and we'll, we're here for any questions afterwards. Take it away, Susan.
Thank you, Council. Sorry. Make sure you can hear me. Good evening, Council. I am Susan Michael, the CIP manager, and I do have a short presentation on the award of contracts for the photovoltaics project. The subject tonight is to award the design build contract to Cizerco and the PM, which is a project management, construction management agreement to Four Leaf. The action in short is to, one, award the design build contract to Cizerco for $3,939,881. Second, to authorize the city manager to execute the contract. Third, to authorize the director of public works to execute any change orders up to a contingency amount of 400, raising the overall total to $4,339,881. And to award a professional services agreement to Four Leaf for the project and construction management services for the project at $225,000. It is crucial that we act on this project tonight in order to begin work on the project and work towards the April 2026 deadline to preserve the NEM 2 rates with PG&E. To get to this point, we've been to council four times, including tonight, starting with the inclusion of the project in the fiscal year 2425 CIP in March of 2024. Since then, the project has been to planning as part, to the planning commission as part of the CIP, and Sustainability Commission, the Parks and Recreation Commission, and we had a community meeting in October of 2024. We've also engaged in a lengthy, lengthy procurement process that included an RFQ and an RFP public for the design build entity and an RFP for the PM CM agreement. So since we have a contract now, proposal from Cizerco, we can update the figures that we've been reporting on up till this point and the real cost for the project, you can say. So this is $1.9 million for Quinlan, it is $1.6 million for the sports center and $500,000 for the community hall. The annual and lifecycle savings are also improved with a projected $290,000 saved annually and a $13.4 million lifecycle savings, that's over 30 years, for these three sites. So project completion timeline for the NEM 2 compliance is April 26, as we mentioned. So for fiscal summary, we have an approved budget, project budget of 6.3 million, and the approval of these two contracts will leave just over $1.6 million in that budget. We're, we'll end here with the recommended action for tonight to approve the design build contract with Cizerco and the project management, construction management contract with Four Leaf to allow the project to proceed and meet the April 2026 deadlines. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for providing the CIP project description in the agenda and a very clear staff report. Appreciate that. Any question from council members? Council member Mohan.
Hi. I had a very quick question.
We, this has come to the council, as you said, four times earlier. Has anything changed in terms of substantive material?
We first had the project approved in order to add it to the CIP for the fiscal year, and then we came back and asked for approval to go for design build procurement. And then we came back to council with the conceptual designs. And since that, we have had a minor change to Quinlan. We simplified the scope to save, how much was it like?
About a half a million.
Half a million dollars. And that's been reflected in the documents that we shared with the council and the community. So that lowered the cost of the project.
And, and that's the only?
That's the only change, yeah.
Great. Thank you so much.
Council member Moore.
Thank you. So I was wondering, looking at one of the supplemental reports, and I want to thank the mayor for providing extra photos of different alternative design features that could potentially be worked into this, the PV system. Have, have you considered that we have the sister city from Toyacaua, the stone lanterns within the park, which have a certain design aesthetic? And then we have the gazebo as well, which has a very kind of intricate, for lack of a better term, I'd call it almost like a gingerbread pattern on there, which is a very strong design aesthetic as well. Do we have some way that perhaps we can integrate these design elements which are already there with whatever is built? So it really, you know, fits the location, fits the place. And I'm referring to the, the structure that would be built over the barbecue picnic area. Has that been considered? And then perhaps if, if it has also, is there a way we can bring in the, in particular, the sister city, the Toyacaua sister city to have some of their input since they do have, you know, these strong features at the park?
Thank you, council member, if I may. The, we are at a conceptual design phase. It's very broad strokes. We're going to try and, we're going to put this many soil, solar panels here and that many there. And we, you know, define the goals for the project. The next phase, if the contract is approved, is to proceed into schematic design. And at that point, we would consider initiatives such as that. There will be, we will be marrying our aesthetic concerns, and especially as an architect, you know, that's important to me and I have that vision for the city, with our get it done on time and meet the budget concerns. So we will work diligently to bring those things together.
Okay, anyone else? Council member Wong.
Yeah, a couple of questions real quick. Thank you. I understand time is of the essence here on the project and it's important. But where is, in the approval cycle, do it come back when you have the design aesthetics? Does it come back to us or is it just approved and sent through? If there are any kind of aesthetic concerns in terms of where the solar panels are placed?
We have asked council for the approval of the conceptual design and there, that would, the next phase would be to go for building permit and to get it approved for that realm and we would continue with building at that point.
So that means whatever design, if we were to make changes in the design, would the vendor be okay with those changes, the way the contract is stipulated? Is it based on the number of panels, the installation points, or is it based specifically on the design that was proposed?
I'm not sure I understand the question. I'm sorry.
Well, the draft design that you have, right, is that, that's what the vendor bid on, right?
Yes, it is, for the most part, a number of panels. The, it's understood that the installations at community hall and sports center, for example, would be pretty straightforward. It was very clearly articulated that the picnic area in Memorial Park, for example, needs more articulation and it can't just be a monolithic shade structure that was shown on those conceptual drawings. That's been, that's, that'll be in the contract.
And is there anything keeping us from putting it on Quinlan, on the south sides and the west side facing areas on the roof?
On the roof. I believe that was addressed in supplemental. We had, we had areas of solar rays on the roof and because of the roof configurations, we aren't able to put a substantial amount of panels on the roof. And in that case, we were asked to consider the option to only do a carport rather than the roof area as well. And that is a half million dollar savings. And it seemed the most prudent way to go. So that is the direction we're going.
Okay, thank you very much.
Council member for one.
Two quick things. The original purpose behind this is basically to save on our energy costs on the one hand, and then also to further some of our climate action plan goals, yes?
Yes.
Okay. The thing that was most interesting to me back when we last discussed this in, in October was primarily around how much we would still save even if we didn't get the rebate and even if we weren't able to avail ourselves entirely of NEM 2. So is it still your judgment that we would continue to save money even if we didn't get those two things?
Yes.
Okay.
I do have more information on that. Should I share? This one? Oh, in the presentation. This one? No. It has the IRA on it.
I mean, with respect to the, sorry about that, little sidebar here. This, the difference between the NEM 2 and the NEM 3 rates is about $4 million over the 30-year life cycle. So for a NEM 3 rate, you'd probably see about nine, you'd be a little over $9 million in savings. So yes, there's still some savings there. The, of course, the return on investment is a lot longer because $4 million there. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, yeah, it does. What I'm trying to get here, you know, to here is, is basically just that this is an investment in Cupertino and our ongoing, you know, cost structure. So it's more like, you know, the action that we took to pay down on our pension trust, right? There's, there's a purpose behind it that saves us money in the long run. So one of the things that I think I'm hearing concern about from some members of the public is, oh, this is going to cost us a lot of money. We don't have a whole lot of money. Don't spend the money. Well, this is something that will save us money in the long run. So that's, that's what is most, that speaks to me the most here. So thank you.
Okay, so the staff report, thank you for acknowledging the changing, change in situation that we initially, we thought we would get 30% covering the cost from Inflation Reduction Act because most of the solar panel installed, as I understand, has some grant matching funding. And, but that funding likely could be cut. Then we likely would pay the entire cost out of our own pocket with no grant.
That's correct. So the way the IRA-
That's a change, significant change in situation.
Yes. I can actually share, if the video team can put my screen up again and make this larger. In theory, there we go. So the last column, so the cost would be, instead of getting 40% back, that would be our best case scenario from the IRA funds, we would, the city would be on the hook, you could say, for the entire $4.4 million. The, one of the considerations is that the payback period would increase. So instead of, let's say 6.72 years to make our money back on the Quinlan site, it would increase to 9.77 years. So that is one way of looking at it.
Then are we expecting, I think a lot of this cost would go down as the technology improve, even a cheaper system would produce better, uh, energy generated?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
That's speculating on the future and what the technology will bring. Historically, solar panels have gotten cheaper and more efficient. It's possible that that will continue in the future, but we can't guarantee that at this point in time. And again, right now, this application is shooting to try and get the NEM 2 rate return.
So I think we initially identified also Blackberry Farm and that's removed. And so if we remove also Quinlan Center so that we do some, but then we save, we leave Quinlan maybe for a future project with maybe lower cost, better efficiency, would that still, is that still possible to adjust?
It is possible. I don't have that chart in front of me. It is possible to pull it out within the contract. It would significantly reduce the amount of savings that we would see from the project, but it is possible to revise that. The, the design build entity, Cizerco, has let us know, just because we're doing a lot of this on the fly, that it would be, we would ask for a 15% markup on the remaining sites in order to cover the economy of scale changes to the project if we went from three sites to two.
Okay, thank you. More questions? Let's go to public comment.
Mayor, I have four requests to speak so far for this item. 12 minutes total.
Can we reduce that to one and a half minutes? Yeah. We have a lot of items today and this is supposed to be consent agenda. Yeah.
Okay, so we have Nori followed by Jean Bedord, and then we will move to those requesting to speak virtually. So welcome, Nori. You have 90 seconds. requesting to speak virtually. So welcome, Nori. You have 90 seconds. Yes.
Are you ready?
Yes, uh, yes, we can. Now, that is the mayor's discretion to reduce time.
Yeah, sorry. We, uh, solar panel is a great concept, using a solar panel to convert sunlight into the electricity that save energy over time. However, solar payback period is nine to 10 years, and the panel lifespan is 20 to 25 to 30 years. I'm against the solar panel system, solar system, I against the location of the solar panel. CIP documents said the Quinlan Community Center is Memorial Park. Memorial Park has 22 healthy redwood tree that blocking a sunlight. It might impact removed those trees. And the parking lot gets even darker, blocking nice view and trees, blocking a nice view. And ten new young tree recently planted along the parking lot. Picnic area, building a solar panel at the picnic area, it looks awful. Then picnic area gets dark, no longer fun gathering place. Ten healthy tree are planted. If shading needed, city can place the, like a canopy. And I heard the picnic area is old and needs to renovate it. Many visitors think so. Why city could spend lots of money to build a solar panel for temporary? And I'm asking you to change the solar panel to on the Quinlan Center roof and the senior center roof that has a lot more area, square feet.
Thank you, Nori. That is your time. Next, we have Jean Bedord. Welcome, Jean.
Thank you, council. My name is Jean Bedord, and I'm a resident of Cupertino. And I think this is a very exciting project, and I urge you to unanimously approve it tonight so we can get the show on the road. I'm particularly excited about the changes in Memorial Park. Those picnic areas are dreadful. They are not used because they're in the sun, there is no shade. And I think it's quite innovative to be able to save money on our solar as well as improve the facilities. So again, I think it's exciting. Please don't prolong this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. There are three members of the public requesting to speak virtually, Alisa Roush, Sanar, and Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Alisa. Alisa, you will need to unmute.
Sorry. Okay. I hope the city will keep in mind the rules for removing healthy trees the way they, you know, hold us to it. So I, I hope, you know, that they won't be removing healthy trees. But I also wanted to say that I hope there's a Plan B because, for the money, for, because I can't imagine this administration is going to give any money to California. They don't care about climate change. They don't believe it, it's real. And, you know, we just, I can't imagine they're gonna pay it. They don't like California. They don't like any of this. So I think we need a Plan B. Thank you.
Thank you, Alisa. Next, we have Sanar, followed by Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Sam.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and councilmembers. Mayor Chow, you're not being restaurant-friendly in reducing public comment time. There was no need to do that. And I protest that you're reducing public comment time on a lightly engagement, on a light engagement day at City Council. This is not the way to be restaurant-friendly. I would like to point out that the new federal administration has already revoked the Inflation Reduction Act as a part of the exec order titled Unleashing American Energy, which is exec order number 3418. I urge the city attorney to please clarify to the council, while looking at the exec order that was passed, the Inflation Reduction Act funding has been revoked, and this EO 3418 specifically calls that out. Specifically, it says EO 14082, as of September 12, 2022, titled Implementation of the Energy and Infrastructure Provisions of the Inflation Reduction Act of 2022, have been revoked. And so it is foolhardy on our part, ignoring the budget crisis that we have, not getting the apple of the tax sharing agreement that we used to have, to march forward with this plan. I'm asking the councilmembers that ran on promise of being fiscally conservative and fiscally responsible and being restaurant-aligned to please not vote for this and revoke this item. What has changed is the federal administration. You're not getting this money, and we shouldn't be spending on these projects. Please do not approve this. Please revoke and reject this item. And you have heard previously from Sports Center and the community-
Thank you, Sam. That is your time. Welcome, Rhoda.
Hi. Hi. I, I just have some terrifying questions or, or asks pertaining to transparency. So I, I agree with Sam on, on, on many of his points. You know, and actually, if we were looking to save money in a global sense, then it would have been appropriate to look at the library. But it turned out the library is managed, pays a different PG&E bill, and we're not paying it, though we didn't look at it. Which is kind of a little strange, but it is what it is. The fact of the matter is, is that when we do pay our PG&E bills, we are paying for solar, we are paying for wind. So, you know, if we generate ourselves, if they generate it, you know, as far as climate change, I, I see that as somewhat of a wash. The thing that I would like to see when we see these estimates is what, what would happen if we didn't do this project, and we took that money, and we got, let's say, 5% a year, 5% a year interest, that's probably pretty reasonable over 30 years? And how does that pencil out? So that would be, that would be an ask there. And, and I, I do hope that we, we get something aesthetically pleasing, Memorial Park. I would expect this to go through. But I would like to see more transparency on the cost. The other thing is, is what happens when we get these increases in tariffs from China at 10%? How will the contract be reflected if we, if there's tariff increases? Thanks.
Thank you, Rhoda. Mayor, no additional requests to speak on this item.
Thank you. So first, can we answer, I think one question is, would the tariff have any impact on the pricing, or are we using domestic products? I think-
Mayor, we are using domestic products.
So it shouldn't be affected by the tariff?
It shouldn't. I can't make any guarantees, but that was the marching orders and the RFP.
Okay, thank you.
And, and just for clarity, we are using the maximum amount of domestic products that we can. I'm sure there will be some products that are, are foreign made. We don't make all of those products in the U.S., but we are maximizing our domestic product purchases.
Thank you. In the interest of time, I'll just make the motion. My motion is to approve the staff recommendation with the modification to remove Quinlan Center/Memorial Park from the project to reduce the total cost, project cost by $2,493,000. And so that's my motion.
I, I think I need to interrupt with that. By reduce, it's not as simple just removing Quinlan and reducing it by that amount. There is an economy of scale increase to the other projects. If we were to remove Quinlan, the estimated amount is, I'll let you handle that one.
If the, the base contract would be $2,358,904. And with contingency, the total would be $2,594,000, sorry, $795,2594795.
Come again. So what would be, so recommendation, recommended action number one, originally it was amount of $3,939. Do you have the number? Can you project it?
Yes. The original amount, base contract, the original overall amount was $4,339,000, sorry, $4,339,881.
Councilmember Moore and Councilmember Wong.
So I actually support the recommended action. I would like to see the table one more time showing the kilowatt hours produced by the, the Quinlan project, because we, it appeared that it was producing the most out of the three projects, the highest amount, and that removing it would be a significant reduction.
Yes. If Video can share my screen?
Video, can you please share the screen?
Oh, there we go. And I can zoom in, in theory?
Yeah, it's column A. Thank you. And I would like to hear from my other fellow councilmembers what their opinions are on this, on this project, parsing items out, or, or if they are in favor of the recommended action.
Councilmember Wong?
In principle, I actually believe this is a great idea. I have 39 solar panels and two 9.3 kilowatt hour batteries in, in place. I pay P&amp;G $5.16 a month for electricity. It's a great idea from an investment perspective. What, what I am worried about is really just, the cost of solar panels will go down, and the IRA that's being ripped out means we have a longer, longer payback period. And, and that does concern me. I know that we're being more fiscally prudent than before. I think, I think the solar panels are a great idea in general. If, if I were on the side of approving it to my fellow councilmembers here, I would be really having some of the restrictions as to where some of these would go, especially Quinlan and Memorial Park. But I also want to ask Mr. Mosley the question about economies of scale, because when I look at the, it's, so you're, we're on the same page, page seven of seven, or the one of one of the Attachment B draft PSA, at the very end, it lists all the hours and the rates. Where in this table does it give us economies of scale in terms of hourly rates for design, build, or pre-construction, construction phase? This is the one, the document that's titled, so that you're on the same page, Professional Services Agreement, Attachment B. How are we getting economies of scale on solar panels? Or is it the cost of the panels? Are we getting a discount with more, or are we getting services?
It's gonna be the mobilization cost for contractors and other items along those lines. We would have the designer working on three separate projects at the time, coordinating those PG&E efforts simultaneously, and, you know, removing one of those could address those, those issues. So-
Okay.
Right now, they're spreading that over three sites as opposed to two.
Okay. Coordinating with PG&E is not fun. We do understand that. That's been difficult for a lot of people who've done home residential installations. But, but are the hours reflected in the fact that we're doing three projects that's allowing us to have the discounts? Is it because we exceeded a certain number of hours, we had a threshold of discounts? Or is it just because three projects are going on at the same time?
I don't think that all of their profits based on hourly rates. I think part of it is the construction aspects of it and the coordination there.
Okay, thank you.
Member Mohan and then Councilmember Fuhrer.
Thank you, Mayor Chow. I, I would like to approve the, the staff recommendation. As we have talked about this evening, it has come before the council several times. It is, it is consistent with the city's climate action plan. In, at some point, the, the plan recommends that we move to solar use in, in every city facility. This is just the beginning, and I, I would support it. My only concern, and, and that applies to any concern, any issue where we are expecting federal funding, is, is the uncertainty regarding the, the Inflation Reduction Act funding. But I think at this point, we don't know any more or any less, and so my recommendation would be to go with the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fuhrer.
So, yeah, per my comments earlier, I'll just reiterate that even without the, the federal rebate, this would still be a very good investment. And so, you know, the, the issue involving what the federal government will or will not pay for based upon the caprice of the current administration is not really something that is an issue that I am going to consider tonight. The question to me is just fundamentally, is this a good investment even without that? And since the answer is yes, I don't see a reason not to support it. The one thing that I will note for Susan and everyone else who's going to have a hand in, in designing what this looks like physically is, is you've got a great opportunity here to make a bunch of people very happy with a pretty project. So we definitely will hope that, that that's what it turns out to be. I'll be looking forward to it.
I accept the challenge.
Excellent.
Councilmember Wong?
I would like to ask the city attorney if we know for sure if the EO has been revoked, 3418.
I, I don't know for sure if the EO has been revoked. I know that there, there is, there is ongoing debate about the, the legality of impounding these funds. So I would expect that to be a subject of, of litigation if, if in fact that executive order remains in place.
Point of order, then, is it point of inquiry, can we actually approve something with the condition that if the IRAs, if the funding from the federal government comes into place, we can proceed? If the funding does not continue, then we do not proceed? Is there a way to do that in this?
procedurally, that's not an issue. Practically, the timing may, may affect the viability, or at least the economics of this project. And I would defer to the public work staff as to, as to how that would work.
Okay, thank you. And a question to Susan, then, or Chad. I would assume that the economics will go down over time with solar. As the panels, panels go from 30% efficiency to maybe a theoretical 50% efficiency, it's possible that it's gonna be cheaper to do that. It's a question of whether labor will be cheaper over a run. So what is the urgency in doing this if we do not get the IRA project? I do believe of climate action plan, which I do believe that's important, but what is the urgency in this contract to put this in place?
The only urgency now is the NEM 2 applications, which are required, required to finish the project by April of next year. And those rates do provide about a $4 million difference in-
And the NEM 2 will be grandfathered, correct?
Grandfathered for at least 20 years, yes.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Okay, so, yeah, to me, I, I'm concerned if we don't get the, the, the funding, then the return on investment will be lengthened to like 10 years. In 10 years, I, I'm pretty sure that solar panel will become cheaper and with higher efficiency. And then we are stuck with an older system with less efficiency, when we could have, if we waited, to get a better system. So I'm not sure this is the right type to go all in, given the financial situation of the city, and given the uncertainty of even additional funding for solar for the next four years. So. Yeah.
Just, just one quick comment. If we take the savings on them, on the NEM 2 over 20 years, right, and we look at what that would be versus if we got stuck on NEM 3, right? And we look at the amortization of the $4 million that we put in interest for five, five years, that's about 2.5 million in interest over that 10-year period and a little bit longer for 20 years, it's the cost differential on that, and the cost of solar panels coming down, that would make the mayor's case, right? That, that's what we're looking at. I'm trying to do fast calculations here. I can't run these NEM 2 rates fast enough right now. But, but it could, and the, the thinking here is that even if we miss the NEM 2 rates, putting that $4 million into interest for the next five, for the next 20 years, or 10 years, if we decided doing 10 years, I want to know if that number's bigger than the savings that we're getting on the NEM 2 versus NEM 3. That's just for me to know, so.
Yeah, just, just briefly, I did a quick calculation myself. If you were to get 5%, or let's say 4%, that's a little more realistic. You could potentially gain $13 million over 30 years. And I think the NEM 2 rates, our savings is about $13 million over 30 years. That's just real, real rough, and, and I would really need to get my finance people here to really hash that in. But, you know, we're talking, it could be comparable.
That's why I thought maybe if we have a compromise solution, we do some of it, but not all of it. That way, if the situation improved, we can take advantage of- not all of it, that way, if the situation improved, we can take advantage of that. So. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you. So I, I think speculating on interest rates is, is really not part of this agenda item. Also, with the new administration, I've seen a lot of backpedaling for things that they've said that they're going to be doing, so I, I would personally prefer that we're making the effort to help stabilize the grid and provide energy here, so I'm going to move the recommended action if I have a second.
Second.
Okay. Let's vote.
The motion carries with Wong and Chow voting no.
Thank you, council, for your consideration.
And thank you for really great, the staff report and all the effort. Looking forward to the design in the Memorial Park. Next part, next, it will be an item eight, the TBD list.
So, it's seven fifty-eight. Forty minutes.
Do we have a short staff presentation, or? Oh, this wasn't on consent.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. There's no presentation tonight. This is the item that was continued from the last council meeting. There is, however, a staff report that we have included in the agenda packet and the TBD list, and as we mentioned in the staff report, we're looking, the recommended actions for tonight, there are two. One is for the council to review the TBD list and adopt staff recommendations for items five through eleven, and second is to provide direction for items one through four and twelve through sixteen, and we're here for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from fellow councilmembers? No question, let's go to public comment.
Yes, Mayor, we have two members of the public requesting to speak on this item.
How many?
Two.
Okay, I guess we can have three minutes.
Peggy Griffin and Jean Bedord. Just a reminder, anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please have your request to speak submitted in the next nine minutes. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, councilmembers and staff. I, I'm a little bit confused as to the difference between agendizing something and just putting it on the, maybe to be considered for the work plan. I'm assuming that if you agendize it, it happens faster, but if you could clarify that, that would help. Looking at the items five through eleven, I agree with the staff, except for number eleven. I would keep it there to make sure it happens, or agendize it. But I thought it was agendized before. Numbers twelve through sixteen, agendize them, get them, get direction. One through four, the only ones that I had were three and four, agendize to get them done. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next, we have Jean Bedord. Welcome, Jean.
Good evening, councilmembers and staff. My name is Jean Bedord, and I am a Cupertino resident. Tonight, I oppose the reactivation of two committees that are on your list, number twelve and number thirteen. The first is the Economic Development Committee, and the second is the Legislative Review Committee. They're both ineffective committees that consume limited staff resources with no benefits to residents. So why are they ineffective? I've already sent an email to council on the ineffectiveness of a Brown Act body for economic development. While we all support the concept of furthering economic development for Cupertino, a body organized by the city is simply going to be ineffective. It's the Rome platform. The Legislative Review Committee is ineffective for a different reason. Cupertino is a small city with a poor reputation, particularly in Sacramento. It needs to collaborate with other cities to be effective, and this is best done through city associations and person-to-person relationships with our representatives in Sacramento. Another major problem with the LRC is that in February twenty-twenty-two, the LRC consumed four hundred hours of staff time. That's a lot of scarce resources, particularly now. Only the Planning Commission and Parks and Recreation Commission consume more staff time. These commissions provide value to the, to the residents. In comparison, the four hundred hours spent on the LRC produced a handful of support letters, which were ineffective in influencing local representatives in Sacramento or the governor's office. Please, don't waste staff and public time by reactivating ineffective committees that provide no, yes, no benefit to residents. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Jean, and we have one member of the public requesting to speak virtually, San R. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and councilmembers. I am in support of most of the staff recommendations. I would encourage you to be thinking about a new TBD item list that focuses on future set of items that really impact the city in a significant manner. For example, do we have the financial wherewithal to do the Memorial Park plan? Does that need to come back to a future agenda item? And does that need to be revisited? Let's, let's be real with our finances. It's, it's already concerning that councilmembers, including one that just got elected, voted for spend when there are no grants coming, and we have more spend on the Memorial Park plan, as much as eighty million, and we cannot afford that. So I urge you to think big. I urge you to move past this list that you have, accept the staff recommendations on most of the items, and then look at being minimalistic on future agenda items and focus on the big-ticket items where you have to reduce costs, please do so, where you can improve the community through the, through the return of community events, or the purchase of new public parks, let's please see that. So looking forward to more strategic future agenda items. Thank you.
Thank you, San. Next, we have Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Rhoda.
I, in the past, and perhaps in the present, we have been paying a legislative consultant, and whatever that consultant has been doing has been largely opaque. When we had the Legislative Review Committee, the work of that legislative consultant was visible. So, you know, maybe we don't need to have a legislative consultant, or maybe there needs to be some transparency as to what the legislative consultant has been doing. With respect to Jean Bedord's comment about the city association, it's interesting, because sometimes the city of Cupertino has been at odds with what the city's association wanted. Most notably was, had to do with tax sharing agreements. And oh, by the way, we still have, the city of Cupertino still derives significant income from another tax sharing agreement. It's called Insight. And who knows whether that's at risk? And by the way, let's keep an eye on that, because our sales tax revenue continues to be at risk if we lose that one as well. And otherwise, I agree wholeheartedly with what Peggy Griffin has said. She does her homework, and I, she's, she's spot on. So, and I thank you for, for listening and all the work that our city council does for us.
Thank you, Rhoda. Mayor, no additional requests to speak on this item.
Okay, thank you. Any councilmember would like to make a comment? If not, I have a motion to make. Okay, I'll just share my motion to help with the discussion. My motion is on the screen, that I'd like to, I'm told by the city manager and the attorney that I need direction from the entire council to agendize these items. So I am making a motion to agendize the following items as soon as appropriate. First is an action item to put the City Hall renovation and City Hall Annex to the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six CIP list. As I understand, averging was coming to the council agenda last November, and so we also need, yeah. And then, and second is an action item to reenact the Economic Development Committee and Legislative Action Committee with the original Munich Code before they were removed in early twenty-twenty-three. And third is an action item to restore audit committee responsibility, as previously stated. And the fourth is an action item to expand the responsibility for Planning Commission to add small cell issues and transportation issues such as traffic demand management, intersection reconfiguration, lane reduction. And perhaps we should rename it as Planning and Transportation Commission, such as Espala Auto does, and reenact Environmental Review Committee as a subcommittee of the Planning Commission. And a study session to consider potential budget reductions, such as staffing levels, unneeded contracts, and reconsider some service level reductions and permit fee increase for residents. Thank you. Yes, a second.
All right, a second.
I'm willing to consider friendly amendment if you would like to make minor amendment. So maybe I should number the item. So these are, these are common, not part of the motion, yeah. So I'm removing the subitem, those were. So this should be the motion, yeah. Oh, sorry. Councilmember Mohan.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just wanted a clarification. For items one through five, no, one through four, I'm sorry, this is, this will appear as part of a study session or further discussion at some point. So I think we should take it off the TBD list, and I may be repeating some things that you have stated here. So you want, you want to agenda, am I understanding this right? You've said the motion is to agendize the following items, an action item to put City Hall renovation, City Hall Annex. So we're going to bring it back on the agenda? Is that, is that how I understand it?
For number one to four, I'd like to bring them back as action items.
Okay, as part of one agenda item, because.
They don't, they might be separate agenda items as they, as, as appropriate, but likely in the upcoming meetings.
Okay, and item number five, I think staff recommends removing this item. I.
Item five is a new item, actually, it's not in the current list. This is a request from community members that we can reconsider budget reduction.
Item number five is about.
And also reconsider some service level reduction that were removed, and there were, last year, we also increased permit fee for residents. So it's a request for the residents to consider potential cut, but also consider to bring back certain cuts that has impacted residents. And this would require study session, because I'm not sure, but since this requires certain staffing work, so I thought it's better to have a council majority agreement on pursuing that.
Okay, so maybe I'm misunderstanding it. I thought we were going down the TBD list to figure out what action, what items need to stay on the list, what need to be agendized, or what need to be.
I'm not, this, this, some of this related to the TBD list, some are not.
Okay, just for clarification, should we go down the TBD list, and then we can add or, or we can go with additional items that council proposes? What, if I could ask a question of, of staff, what would make it easier, if that's okay with you?
We do have the list, and Tina's ready to pull it up as Attachment B. It will be easier to go through item by item. There are items that we're waiting for council's direction to proceed further. Tina, if you want to pull up the chart?
Maybe, I see councilmember, Vice Mayor Moore and Councilmember Wong has the hands up. Would you like to speak first? Yeah, councilmember, Vice Mayor Moore.
Thank you. Mayor, will you please put up your list again? So before we go to the Attachment B, I think your item one neatly combines items one through four on Attachment B, on the Attachment B list. You don't show item five, which is providing closed-session materials. I, I think that that was a, a good request.
Item, item five, I included that in the council procedures menu.
Put it there, okay, understood. Okay, and then for, for your item two, the, as you know, we both served on the Legislative Review Committee, and there was, there have been a number of bills which have been approved in the past couple of years that I, I believe we needed to be weighing in on, and we've been not receiving the updates which we had before, and we have been paying for our lobbyists, and we need to have that information. And I prefer that, since we had put together a legislative platform, which was extremely well-done by the prior councils, that we, that we get back to, to doing that as well, and we participate in what's going on in Sacramento that ends up ultimately affecting us. For item four A, the Environmental Review Committee, that one, it's, it's challenging to decide what the makeup would be, so I, with that, I would prefer that we have a study session, and we go back to having our input from staff about that. I chaired that committee for four years, and, and at the time, it was a combination between staff and council member and a planning commission member, and the good part about that committee was that you got a first touch at the environmental documents that were coming through, and so you had a planning commissioner who had, who had got a chance to be reviewing it, and you had a council member had a chance to be reviewing it, and it just, when those documents then go to the planning commission and then go to the city council, you've already had this kind of primary, primary look at it, so it helped in that way, and it also increased the, the, the knowledge base that you have of the, of the commissioner and the council member. So I would like to see. So I would like to see that brought back. I think we, we need to have these environmental documents looked at in the process, looked at. I think it helps the, the community to do so. So I, I do, I agree with, with having it. It, who it would be comprised of, I'm not entirely sure. I'd like to hear some, have some deliberation around that. And lastly, I, I would think I might with your item five, perhaps just reword it a little bit and just call it a budget balancing strategy study session, something like that. And it would ultimately work in alignment with our budget process as we're getting ready to approve the budget. So that would be, essentially, it's something that we should have in the process ordinarily. And this time you, you have some specific items that you want to have there. And I think those are really, are really great adds to it. But yeah, maybe just reword it a little bit, how you, how you want to capture for, for that item.
How about that?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, okay, so would the second accept a friendly amendment? So now the motion is amended as a suggestion by councilmember Vice Mayor Moore. I think Councilmember Wang seconded my motion. You accept it?
I accept, a second again.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Fruen.
If you could move your screen back to the motion.
Oh, okay.
All right, so with the very first one, my concern here is primarily that we, I think almost all of us had some sort of iteration of what to do about City Hall on our work program top ten list. So this feels a little bit premature and I would consolidate it into that process. That doesn't mean that I'm in any way opposed to this, this topic. I just think that that's the process that we should be following. The second one, I'll be honest and say that I, I have extraordinary reservations about the utility of the Economic Development Committee, the way that it was composed previously. And I will second some of the commentary from the public about the utility of Legislative Review Committee. I, I do not see it as having produced anything that merited the expenditure of either time or additional resources on it. I will caution with respect to the Audit Committee. Again, I am not opposed to it having additional responsibilities, but the reason that a number of additional things were removed from it under the municipal code was in order to prevent bottlenecks and I would not want to see us recreate that particular problem. So if there is a change to what the Audit Committee's responsibilities are, I think that we should be looking at that in a study session so that we can go into it with our eyes open. And then to move to number five, we will be going through an entire new budget process very shortly here. And this feels like something that can be folded into that. And the sixth, again, I, I'm fine with a study session on the Environmental Review Committee. I, I would hope that the city attorney's office, whoever is occupying it at the time, can weigh in on things like additional hazards that would be created by things like SB three thirty and its hearing limit, as well as the ramifications of denying a project, an MND for which it might be otherwise eligible under AB sixteen thirty-three. I, I don't really want to give false hope to the public about what this committee would approve.
Customer Fruen. Just, just a reminder that, that the substance is not agendaized today.
Sure, sure. I, I'm just saying, those are the things I'm concerned about. So I would, I would like to see us, if we're going to have a study session for it, to include those things so that they're clear.
Thank you, Councilmember Wang and then Councilmember Mohan.
I withdraw my comments.
Councilmember Mohan.
What I wanted to do was consolidate some of these and, and agendaize them. For example, one, two, three, and four, as you've stated, an action item to put City Hall renovation. So we could agendaize, and I think the staff is bringing that back at some point. It says October, but that's a decision, that's a full-blown decision, it's a discussion in itself, one through four. I also would like all the different committees that you're proposing to go as one agenda item for the future, the Economic Development Committee, the Audit Committee, the Planning Committee, the additional responsibilities for the Planning Commission, as well as the Environmental Review Committee to go as a separate agenda item. And, excuse me, just once again, then, then I'm pretty much done here. And then the budget in itself are, will, will come before the council in several forms and iterations between now and June. So, so I was basically thinking of one agenda item for City Hall, one agenda item for the two committees. And then the budget plays through its own schedule.
Thank you for your suggestion. I will take that into consideration as I agendaize the items for future council meetings. And for the budget study session, I think our normal budget process does not consider a lot of these budget reduction things. So we do need a budget study session, I think, for that. Council.
Yeah, for number five, the only thing I would, I would change in that, if you would take a friendly amendment, is the fact that the reductions in permit fees for residents and increased fees for non-residents, or to look at that mix. We have a lot of non-residents versus residents in those mixes, especially when we look at tennis courts, when we look at facilities. We've got a lot of interesting things in different locations where we have more non-residents than residents in some areas.
Like that?
Yeah.
It's a potential item to consider, yeah. Okay.
Mayor, can I make a quick, quick comment?
Yeah.
For your budget item. And this is a question really for staff. Wouldn't you be considering all these items that the mayor has laid out as part of the budget process?
Senator Mayor, yes, and in fact, the other study session for tonight is to consider allocation plan. That could also be an item for further discussion. Council, remember that we brought an item before council in October, November, including some of these questions. And the service level reduction that was authorized last year. That item was not fully discussed yet, so this could be the opportunity.
Thank you. To me, those are two different items.
May we call for a vote?
Yes, so.
Can I just add one comment? Thank you for providing direction on some of these items. Because we didn't go through the TBD list, item by item. I just wanted to flag items five through eleven on the TBD list. Would the motion, can the motion also include that you're accepting staff recommendation on those?
I will, I have another motion that would be related to the items.
A separate motion for these items?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, if we can have a motion for.
Motion's in play, we call for a vote.
Call, call, I call the question for the current motion. Let's, let's vote.
Are we voting on calling the, calling the question, Mayor? Are we voting on?
So here is the motion we are voting on. I will send it to Kirsten. Okay, so let's vote.
The motion carries with Mohan and Fruen voting no.
Okay, um, um, my screen is still showing, sorry. The, it's still there. Let me stop, okay. Now, here, here is the other motion that I would like to make. I'd like to agendaize number six also, which would consider a minor modification to the municipal code for sound amplification device to allow reasonable amplifiers for like a dance group to do a simple dance in the park, as long as they don't disturb other park users, for example. This is similar, the language comes from the Oakland Municipal Code. Right now, this is just a proposal, but I would like to agendaize this if I have the majority of the council's support. And then also for number eleven, that I would like to keep it until it's added to the twenty-five, twenty-seven. In case it doesn't get on, I hope it continues in the TBD because this is a high-interest item of residents. And for number five, I would like to keep the item for now until it's added to the procedures menu. It's one of the item I'm going to propose for the procedures menu regarding how to handle closed session materials. So this is, second motion is to agendaize number six and keep eleven and five. May I have a second or?
Through the mayor, I have a, I have a question.
Yeah.
Question of staff. So when we have festivals, there is, there's sound amplification. So how, how is that getting around this, this municipal code rule?
Vice Mayor Moore, just, I, I don't have a detailed information on it, but I do know that sound amplification is currently allowed through a city permit. We don't currently have too many complaints about this issue and that's why we recommended removing it from the TBD list. And as Mayor Chow mentioned, it will require a Munich Code update if we're, if we're changing anything right now.
Okay, thank you. So this, when I, when I think about adding this and this allowance, the permitting, it makes me wonder where this would be appropriate to allow, allow it so that we're not inconveniencing the neighbors around whatever area. So if this does come to, to council, I would want to have that considered that cer- certain locations at certain times could be allowed and, and then, so that we're not basically allowing it everywhere. Because there, there are places where we want to have quiet and, and not allow this. So I assume that that's part of what you're looking for.
Hours, yeah. We, I did get a request because some people like to have a small group dance music in the park and they don't want to have to apply for a permit every time. So if it's a small group, they don't really bother too many people. So, but hours, I think definitely we should consider hours, maybe before sunset, something like that. I mean, do I have a second?
Mayor, if I may, so there, there are still a few more items that we didn't go through on this list. Are you accepting staff recommendations for those?
I think so. The rest, we will accept staff recommendation, yeah.
Mayor, may I, if I may, just for point of clarification? Just, just so, just to make sure that, that you, that the council and staff's on the same page. So just, just going through the list, I understand items one through four were addressed by your prior motion. And I would, I think your prior motion also addresses items twelve through fifteen and then item sixteen is actually on the agenda today. Is that, that, is that, is, is, is that a fair characterization of your prior motion?
Item sixteen is not really on the agenda today. Oh, the proclamation certification?
Oh, I'm sorry, I misread that. So, so, so I guess staff would be requesting a guidance on, on item sixteen.
I think, let's keep it on TBD list for now, I.
Mayor, a quick question.
Yeah.
So we've addressed all the issues, that's for item sixteen, if we were to pass the second motion here.
That's what, that's what I'm trying to get at, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so I should add item sixteen to the second motion, that's what you mean?
If you want to include it or if you want to leave it on TBD, you can just leave it there, you have two choices.
Item sixteen.
Mayor, item sixteen, the, the direction we're looking for, either, either we agendaize this at a future date or we remove it, remove it from the TBD list.
I guess we can agendaize it and I'll.
So the friendly amendment is to add item sixteen onto the agendas list for your motion. Is that where you want to go?
Yeah.
Then I'll second if you add that.
Okay. If you want to see the list again.
A quick question, how do you remove marks on the screen?
I don't know, the, the Zoom meeting has these markings and tries.
Through the mayor, tap the lower left corner.
Lower left corner of. Okay, Councilmember Mohan and Councilmember Fruen.
So again, for item number six, are you saying that we put it back on the agenda? Or we leave it on the TBD list or do you actually want to?
So I.
Staff to look at the allowing this music?
If, if the, if this item number six is approved, I will agendaize it sometime when appropriate. So that means mayor would be able to agendaize it as an action item to come back to the council.
Okay, and in terms of number eleven and number, you, you propose just leaving it on the, on the TBD list is?
Yeah.
What was the second one? There was one, one other item.
Five and eleven is keep it on TPD.
Keep it on TBD and then.
TBD until, so next time we would review. If, if it's already addressed, it will be removed next time.
Okay, and for number six, you actually want?
Well, agendaize it as appropriate.
Do you want to agendaize it or do you want to just make a decision today on whether we should go forward or not go forward?
So the part of the motion is we will agendaize it. is we will agendize it at an appropriate time.
Counsel, can I address through the mayor, Councilmember Mohan's question? And to the city attorney, if we wanted to pass that now, could we do that now?
Not on the agenda for action today.
That's what I thought, okay, thanks.
Pass what?
Your suggestion for CMC 13.04, .120.
Yeah, no, yeah. So Councilmember Fruen and then Vice Mayor Moore.
Yeah, I mean, I think that six looks interesting. It seems like a lower lift item that could be added to the city work program. And I would encourage you to put it through that process instead, especially if people have reservations about specifically adopting Oakland's version. I would hate for us to get to a point where we have it as an action item on the calendar and then decide, oh, we would really prefer to have a study session on it.
Thank you for the comment. And Vice Mayor Moore?
Also, with regards to number six, I'm not completely clear. Are you trying to have it so that you can amplify sound without getting a permit? Or are you, are you trying to say that you can, you can obtain a permit to amplify sound?
You can amplify sound without a permit under restrictions.
Okay, so that...
So to simplify the process for the residents.
Yeah, the restrictions are really where the issue comes into play. I've gone, you're not supposed to be amplifying sound, for instance, out at Rancho San Antonio, and I will hear people blasting music. And I don't want to hear people blasting music when I'm out in, you know, the nature preserve. And it's the same with the park because you have the McClellan Ranch Nature Preserve. So the way, way this is being suggested, someone can go out there and be blasting music. It doesn't have to be that loud, but if you're walking down a trail and somebody's walking behind you and they, they're sharing their music, you might not want to be hearing it at that time. It's your quiet time and you, maybe you want to be reflecting without having that intrusion. So I think that this would need a study session on how to have it implemented. It's one thing to say you'd like a group to be able to have, have like a little dance area and have some music play. Even that, if you are doing that on a scheduled basis, you're looking at needing to have a permit just to be having that field area. We had talked about this years ago with soccer, like some of the coaches wanted music.
I guess we can't go too detail on this. So you would rather this to be a study session?
Yes, I can see a lot of unintended consequences without having a full discussion about this. And, you know, the where, when. Yeah, thank you.
So friendly amendment accepted. Secondor, do you accept?
Yes.
Yeah.
I.
Councilmember Mohan?
Just one last comment and I'm sure I've said this before, but I'm not in favor of any additional sound or amplification in the parks. So if you just want to leave it on the TBD list or, I'm not even sure it's, it's weighty enough to have a full-blown study session. But if you think it is and you just want to leave it there, I'm okay with it. But I'm not in favor of any more sound in a park. There's enough sound in the outside world that we don't need it in parks.
So we want to keep it on the TBD? Councilmember Wang, what do you think? You as a secondor?
You can leave it as a study session. I'm fine either way.
Yeah, okay. So the motion is as is? Let's call the question. Can we vote?
Councilmember Mohan and Mayor, would you like to vote with your lights? Thank you. The motion carries with Fruen voting no.
We resolved all the numbers or is there anything still missing?
I believe you said that you will accept staff recommendation for any of the items you have not provided direction on, so we're okay.
Yeah, okay, great. So, yeah, that's, it's 8:42. Let's take a 10-minute break, okay? We are ahead of my schedule, actually. My estimated schedule. Okay, great, let's take a 10-minute break.